All right, it is six oh one, I'm going to call the Dalton Township Planning Commission meeting for November fourth in order. First, we'll start out with a board call. Dave, are you here? Jesse?
Here.
Todd?
Here.
Lee?
Here.
Josh?
Here.
And Kevin?
Here.
In case it is excused. Anything that we need to look at for the agenda for tonight? Commotion? Those in favor say aye. Aye. Oppose? Two of the minutes from the September twenty-fourth. Say aye. 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 Oppose? You're up to public comment, and again, this is something, we have a number of agenda items for tonight. If you have something that's not on the agenda, and you'd just like to make a comment or have a question, you take up to three minutes to ask your questions, or sing a song, whatever you'd like to do. You have three minutes at that time, so open this one up at six oh two.
I have something to ask. We've been getting a lot of phone calls and letters in the mail about a company that wants to buy our property that we have. Any idea about that, all of a sudden, the company that wants to buy property? Oh.
Anything, Sam?
I have a letter here from Land Service Market. And we've gotten three letters so far, and then they called the other day. And they want to buy a parcel that we have, which the light trail is here, it runs from our house behind two other houses, and then the railroad tracks. Have absolutely no idea why they would want that, so we were wondering if there was something going on that's on Williamson Road.
It's out of state investors, they're selling them to everybody. I get them too, I've thrown probably six of them away. I mean, I don't think the valuation's high enough to even entertain.
Yes, for a million, and they said, so you are interested in selling? Is it for a million? Yes.
You won't hear from them again.
You're right, okay, that's a trick. I just wanted to know if they had anything to do with all the other stuff.
If that works out for you, let us know.
I definitely would, yes.
Did you ask them why they wanted it?
They were, they were just interested. That they're trying to, when you ask why you want the property, they said weren't interested in just buying it. And then on the letters, like to buy your purchases this property, we have a closing offer, and a real estate investment company specializes in purchasing data play now.
To help us with this, I always forget this part again. If you get your name and then your address, but if we have questions, if we hear anything here, we can have something that we'd be able to follow up, or at least to make reach out.
My name is Deb Chakis, and twenty-three sixty Williamson Street.
When did, when did that start? Or when did?
This one is dated ten eleven, this was the first one that we got.
And that's the first, okay.
Yeah, and then they called, it was just Saturday.
They prob, I don't know how much they reach out to the municipality to say, hey, we're looking at property there. They usually go to the people, once they find out that somebody's got something, that usually drives the price up for them, so they tend to go directly to people, but, you know, that's.
So, anyone can call and look up our parcel number, they can ask? Because I did check on here, it is our parcel number.
Yeah, I mean, Muskegon GIS, you can go on, and it's, you can click on any parcel, and it'll show you who owns it.
Okay.
It's only my parcel number is public information.
Okay. Just, yeah. That's what I was just interested in.
They have hunting apps that give you the same thing, you can walk along the road, and it'll tell you where the property lines are and a lot of things. It's not as, I don't know how close it is, or whatever, but it'll give you the property owner, that type of thing, too. So it wouldn't take much if they just drove along there with one of those.
Okay, well, it's just kind of, we thought it was worth with everything that's going on. You know, that all of a sudden, yes, so we just wanted to see if there was anything tied in together with that.
Gotcha.
Thank you.
You're welcome. All right, any others?
Do you want me up here?
Sure, are you for one of the items on the agenda tonight? We will actually get to that, we will have a public hearing for that at that point, if you want.
Okay, well, if I'm saying ask, it's like just now the public comment time for that?
No, we actually will have one for each one of those.
You will, sorry.
Yes, yep.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any other public comment?
I have a question.
Sure.
What are you gonna do with that empty building back there, that, the hot story chemical building? That looks, you know, it's just almost dilapidated.
Falling down.
Who's responsible for that?
That is presently owned by Muskegon County, I believe.
Yeah.
So that would be their, that would be their jurisdiction, and whatever they want to do with it.
And you don't have any rules that, you know, just allow that to be like that? It's been like that for twenty years?
Yes, and so zoning ordinance does not apply to, to the county government. There is, there is specifically county government with legitimate authority. So, the, you know, the state law that allows us to zone, it's us wrong. Enforcing zoning regulations on the county government, if they own the property. Yep, and it is a, an environmental cleanup. So, I believe them, and I believe Eagle might be involved in that as well. It'll be handled at the county and state level.
At some future point.
Correct.
Trying to write in here. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Anyone else?
Yes. This condo property, oh, they're not ready for that?
Yeah, we will get to, we're gonna have, we're gonna have public hearings for each one of those, so we bring those up, we invite all, all to speak on what they would like to cover on it, so. Anything not on the agenda tonight? All right, I'll close the public comment at six oh eight. And we'll move on to items for public hearing tonight. All right, so the next, the first one that is up is SU twenty-four dash oh seven and SPR twenty-four dash thirteen, at twenty-two Whitehall Road, Berry Junction Business Park. All right, if, may I have someone here for that? Right, if you would like to, here's what we usually start out with, before we do the public hearing, give the person that's presenting, if you can speak as to what they're doing, and might answer some questions ahead of time, and then, again, at that point, we will then open up public hearings, so everyone may be able to speak there. So if you'd like to give us your information, and up here.
I'm, got a little bit of a cold, so if we can through that. I'm Joel Mau, I would be the one owning a building, the Berry Junction Business Park. Primarily, what we are planning to do initially is have one building, which I would occupy as well. And what we really are is a small business park. And what I mean by that is, there's a lot of people, like myself, that have tried to search and find small square footages to conduct a business out of, and that space is really hard to find. And I'm talking about thousands of feet, two thousand square feet. There's a lot of big buildings, but they're on the floor to the others first. And I experienced this when I retired about four years ago, I thought I retired. I was international salesman for twenty-five years in the old building industry. And I got called out of that industry to build and make COVID masks. So I started to set up, I had an inordinate amount of experience on how to make them. And I set up a little shop inside my garage to start making them, grew rather quickly. And so I tried to find some space, a thousand square feet, to build more out of. My daughter's a nurse in Indianapolis, so it made sense that I would find something. I struggled, I ended up in Spring Lake, and I live in Ada, resident of Ada, escaped township. I ended up in Spring Lake before I could find a reasonably small space, didn't have a bathroom, that I could make some masks and get through that period through COVID. But out of that, I reached out to some of my former clients, and I've been known in the industry as problem solver. So I kept getting called back to the industry to solve problems. And during that time, thinking one thing led to another, and I started gaining business through my reputation in that industry. And what it also made me think about is, I'd like to have bathroom, a few other simple ones at least, and again, searched for some small square footage, very hard to find. It led me to start planning and thinking about a piece of property that I purchased out of years ago on Whitehall Road, and I thought, this is the perfect spot, I'm moving out of Cascade, by the way, I'm moving my family back north. From heart originally, hope she had a couple. Hope to spend a fair amount of time in Muskegon County as well, throwing up. So, we've bought some property in North Shores, we're gonna move out of here. And with this property, I'd like to put my business in it, and also lease to other people like myself. They have a small business, it may be a plumber, that needs a place for his van, maybe he needs to put some of his pieces together, the van, and store it in a warmer environment, so a heated space, and offer them the opportunity to grow their business, or have a business where they can't do it at home outside of your property. It could also be an incubator for new business owners. But you know, there's great opportunities for small, new individuals that want to start businesses. So that's the premise of what we're doing. I don't want to be that storage park guy, where you're wanting to see a thousand, a hundred, a place, that's not what I want to be. I want to be an attractive, natural setting business park. And I want it to be a park-like setting, that's why I use that name in coming up with many, your township business park. Well, I want to see picnic tables, I want to see trees, you know, but it is a business environment. But I want it to look nice, and have a natural environment. I grew up on a tree farm, I share with you. So, my plan for the vegetation that's there, I will be removing trees, yes, but I plan to replace the plant, the small ones, where needed. People saying they need privacy, I'll accommodate that, and do it as naturally as I can with the trees that are there. And that in the nutshell, is what I want to point, for now, one building. And then, if the business takes off in its friendly environment, in a good environment for the Dalton Township, then we'll add more buildings. In a nutshell, that's, that's it.
All right, very good. All right, I have to, we'll open up a public hearing on this one, so that we can hear some of the public comments here, so. I will open up the public hearing for SU twenty-four dash oh seven and SPR twenty-four dash thirteen, at six fourteen. If you do wish to make a comment, stand and we can get your name and address again, so we can have some information, you can follow up with that.
I'll keep this narrow, and be able to cut off a little information in regards to the property that you're proposing, and the reason of class related to, we have, we have, in commercial development, that you have inside of you. A question outside of that letter I provided, something I did, is in regards to what's being approved, because I know it looked like that, this small type of these presentations, and you mentioned kind of the building one, with proposals of looking forward to additional phases. I tried to address a little bit of all of it in my letter, but I'm just curious, is it just building one that's being reviewed and approved?
Could we be building one, two, and three? The three that are on phase one. With this approval, he would have the option of building all three within the timeframe of the. The timeframe not being used as valid.
There's some of it in the letter, it says, um, the southernmost, I think, is the breakout parcel of the half acre. So perhaps that's for a future discussion, that's a further consideration at a later date. But primarily, I would, I love the idea, you mentioned about preserving trees, a more natural environment. Unfortunately, after I saw their proposal, and took a more discerning look at that tree line on the eastern edge of the property, it really kind of made me uncomfortable with the idea of, of that twenty-five foot to twenty foot step back that's proposed, and that not being a not screening or privacy. That's a major to the commercial development. I go in more detail in the letter about, I would like to hear, and I think it's standard, it's a six-foot fence, the exception I have noted is for that breakout parcel, which is closer to our home. And I even included, I think, some examples of properties in the area where there's residential, commercial, and joint. They are separated by a privacy fence. Having spent twenty-two years with this property, being kind of perpendicular, being important opposed to, I mean, the twenty-nine, ten Whitehall Road, which is also a commercial development, I had my fair share of experience of what it's like, you can just live across the street from one, which kind of leads me to, I can address my concerns about everyone so close to me, and what I can be done to kind of help eliminate some of my concerns as to traffic, noise, lights, and, and other things that I mentioned in the water as well, I think we've even seen, you know, it's just, it's been ongoing with just trash and light pollution, and, you know, so I'm just trying to, you know, be respectful of what he's doing, because I think it's important, increase the tax base for Dalton Township, which I think is important for our small township here, but also kind of find that balance between residential and commercial, which I think is what everyone's trying to accomplish as well. We have thought about the idea of additional trees planted, and however, anything to, you know, ten plus twenty years for, for growth, to truly create a screen that would be adequate and sufficient to provide the privacy I can afford, and what I think that would be a more beautiful and aesthetic visible option. I don't know that would provide the security that I'm looking for as well, which is why I ended up with the fence. If you have any questions, let me know, otherwise I'll be getting through the rest of this hearing. If it comes up, I'd be happy to.
Clarify though, with the ten-foot fence, I mean, it looks like from my, your house is right next door, to the east, right? And so with that extra height to the fence, for the fence, you're, you're looking at, if there was development of that southernmost parcel. But you're not concerned about higher fence for ones that would be approved right now?
It would be nice, rational, it's based on the fact that I have an elevated basement, so to speak, so it's approximately three feet of upgrade, which makes it a little bit more of a elevated view, and if it were only a six-foot fence, and if they were only an eight-foot fence, like, some of that, to me, like, which and whatever, would still maybe intrude in, in the home. So the, the, of the phase development, I originally had eight feet, but when I went and looked at some of the examples that I provided pictures for, I believe, they're six foot, I did not measure them, maybe a little stretch next to it.
These look like six foot.
And I thought, okay, that might not, that may not be so bad, like six might work there. And everything else, in terms of us being outside, you know, everything else is ground, well, there's no real elevation anywhere else on the property, except for in the house.
Do you think it's six foot would be okay, you know, building to stop the southernmost parcel?
Correct, and I don't know, because I haven't measured or walked it off, to see kind of where he's divided, but that half acre actually looks like where it, he has where it has the view shed from my home, and I haven't, haven't done all that, because I really have the capacity to, I guess, of. So, to your point, might it extend beyond that half acre, I don't know. It might.
Joel, artist Joe from St. Temple River Road to the south edge of that first building, I don't.
I don't know, it's not the full scale, right, it's possible, I'd like to see.
How later?
It's in the area over here.
Small.
Well.
That's a little.
I don't know.
Okay. Right.
Yeah, I was looking at, just, I was just wondering what I was, you know.
It's four something.
It's four. One inch equals forty feet.
I'm gonna scale about a hundred. I'm scaling it, it looks like from the center of the, the property line at the center of River Road to that building, it is about a hundred and sixty. Subtract thirty-three from that.
It's a hundred and sixty feet to that.
Could be about, could be about one twenty.
Yeah, it looks like it's.
Could be about one twenty-seven to the right of way line.
Fifty feet, about three hours, maybe.
It gets, yeah, good, and, and all of them, what happened? Have they no good, or? No. It couldn't be better.
I think this, not to interrupt or anything, but this shows the, this is the natural vegetation that's there.
Yeah, yeah.
Some of the leaves have already come off, so I think this is pretty recent.
Very.
But I, I don't disagree with what she, I have no problems with your saying, with some natural.
Yeah, so thank you for that, and then, I think my only question is just the picture, right, I put it, we, we put that, so that round, I'm trying to understand, and I know it's, again, future base, but that southernmost parcel indicated that there was a forty-foot front step back, so I just was assuming that the driveway was coming out like that. But I just had some comments about that, and really, just for, you know, everyone's reference, having lived there for so long, and had a driveway that it's accessed in that area, I just, I don't know what's your opinion here, like, that's the real environment, like, right in here, it's a commercial drive, residential drives, and that would be adding a commercial drive from the west, you're coming from the west, heading east, or sorry, I'm heading east, heading west. Super simple, you're coming from the west, heading east, not so much. So I tried to the best of my ability to break that out and explain, but the, the congestion that happens right there when you're trying to make, when I'm trying to make a turn into my driveway, kind of with that environment, it's like, I have to do that a couple of times a day. So I can imagine that there were some increased traffic, and I'd be trying to make a similar turn, but sooner than I guys. But just something to consider, if you guys make decisions in the future.
Very good, thank you so much. Anyone else? Last time. All right, we close the public hearing for that at six twenty-five.
Joel, on your building, your building number one, your, that would be, you're gonna use one of those units?
Yes.
At least out of three of them?
Yes. Initial building would be, if they're all fifty by one-fifth, I'd probably take, right now, I'm planning to take a forty by fifty, jump it on. You know, other than that, it's exposed, it's winter, I think, a little more. So, maybe, please.
Um, is there, like, does parking sit back in the, on the rear of these buildings? Is that just like for, possible trucks to get back there? On the, on the very back one, kind of in between the building, that's the parking lane?
Yeah.
This, this.
Maybe the engineer just threw that out there, for all the, when they did their due diligence.
Okay.
Before they started drawing, they, otherwise the parameters are there.
Okay, so, yeah.
Yes.
There's something.
This, is this just something here?
For fire.
Okay, just, oh, just, it just more has space than anything.
Right. Again, I apologize, which could, not, not a coach.
This, this just, this is just kind of there for space, just in case, kind of, or is it that, that could be paved or anything?
No, maybe just be around.
Yeah. Let's give it. Public key first.
Any other questions?
Well, Steve, with this, this is, has a special, we have a special use. Does, uh, unit Joel's wanting to be wholesale warehouse?
Correct.
So then, so I guess for like, for example, the other three units in that first building, they would all have to fall under C-one or C-two use, unless somebody wanted to get a special use to at least one of those units, or they would all be covered under this special use, do you think?
So if, if somebody comes in and wants to rent one of the units as a warehouse, then they would be able to do that as long as, as long as it's been less than a year. If you establish that special use under this special use permit.
Yeah.
Or they were extended for another year, at Joel's request. Otherwise, they would either have to get a new special use permit, or a different use that's permitted as a special use, or have a, a by right use.
Is that administratively done then?
That would be by right, would be administratively approved.
Okay. Any other questions? Actually closed the, the public hearing portion. But we, we may have a point where, okay.
I have a question for Joel. So you, you will own these buildings and the property. Do you have any description on what tenants can and can't do? Like, the governance of, you know, old trucks, cars, dumpsters outside, nighttime parking.
We have not developed a list.
Not sure what I would call that, but condo association.
Rules.
Yeah.
Of the park.
That might be something that would be useful. As you know, you have a spot, next thing you know, there's old boats and jet.
You have a spot, next thing you know, there's old boats and jet skis that are busted down, boats that should be disposed of and.
We have been working on it. Boy, we're playing, I'll call it lease agreement. So in there could contain a lot of those.
Hmm.
But maybe an overall business park.
That'd be a good idea. Yeah, so they know. The limitations of how that property and building space would be used. If somebody could move in and all of a sudden become a manufacturer of who knows what, right? I don't know.
Yep.
Okay.
So with this approval, we would be approving something that would be a blanket for everything would be the six AM to ten PM.
That's, I believe that would be the use, the special use. Specifically.
Other than that, as far as what the business signage, all that stuff would still be going through, anything that they want to do would have to go through the normal process, correct?
Correct.
They need to put a sign on the, on the site plan.
What's your desire in terms of breaking ground?
April. Most continue with this weather.
Yeah, cause that's, I, I would propose uh, an approval with um, some conditions to it. Tonight, and maybe you could come back in a month or, you know what I mean? So we're all.
Can you repeat that whole thing about the? Special use permitting again that you were just kind of. Confusing me on.
So the special use permit that's being pulled tight is for his use specifically.
What he's going to do with the unit that he's gonna occupy?
Correct.
For the actual construction.
Uh, and the site plan is for the specific construction. The special use can apply by extension to anything. In one of the buildings that we approved tonight. Uh, but they would have a year. To go in there under this special use permit. Anything, this special use permits expire after a year unless they're renewed for another year by the request of the applicant at no cost. Uh. And that's just so, that we can't have something, you know, say twenty years from now, when the area has changed. They can't come back, look through the records and say, oh, you approved a concrete crushing plant next to this neighborhood twenty years ago, and the neighborhood didn't exist. So, anything that goes in there. Any new businesses that want to be on wholesale warehousing and go in within the, while the permit, special use permit is valid.
Mm hmm.
And then once that. Kind of open date ends, then it's anything that was there is what's permitted.
Do you think that's currently in C one or C two?
Essentially, this is. The special use permit is essentially applying to all three of the buildings that are being proposed tonight. And then if in a year or two. Those units that are not there, then it. The special use applies only to what is there at that point.
Yes.
Sounds pretty political-ish.
Yeah. So what happens if like a year and a half from now, I wanna rent one of his units and build widgets in this unit? What happens then? I have to get.
I have to pay eight hundred and fifty dollars.
So if he extends, a year from now, if he extends that special use permit. Then that wholesale warehousing use is still open. So it can be, be. You know. For lack of a better term, expanded, even though it would be an expansion of what was permitted. The special use has that time to be established. And at that time, if it's not established after the second year, if an extension they've requested and granted. And what's there is what? Has the permit.
This is myself vague, uh, but could we approve, could this be approved tonight with uh, the conditional? Uh, refinement of your tenant plan, fence, rubs, trees, I don't know, whatever. Um, I guess whatever you heard tonight or. You know. I hate to stall it and, you know, like, well, what about this? What about that? Then we're here for months and.
Yeah.
You've done a lot in terms of the engineering. It's pretty obvious.
If it's something that the planning commission feels they would like to review, then it should be postponed. And the plan amended and re-presented. Under this application, but if it's something that you feel you can have done with the condition, like for the fence. That's something that can be, you can approve it with the condition, and then they would come back. I would administratively review it and determine whether or not it meets the condition that you imposed.
Right. All right, motion tonight would be for both, both of these would be approved in, in the same, both, correct? Okay. So. Assume you're aware of the working space that you.
Yes, I think that was addressed at some point this afternoon, but we only had a chance.
Up the lights back. You think those would be able to be eliminated to, to help the neighbor or anything to be there for? If it's security, I guess.
Yeah, there's only that are, there's only that are on that end.
Okay.
Yeah.
No, I see.
Just want some, some light over entry, just for safety.
Yeah, there's, blowing the back of the building, in the back of the building shows lights. There's no doorway is man back there.
We don't have, I mean, it'd be nice to have just maybe one central light, so if you have to walk into maintenance or something. Right. Other than that, we don't have to have lights back there for any other reason.
And then this, as far as, as far as he's concerned, would you, would you be open to it? To be able to build a ten foot fence back there?
Uh, yes, I just want to know how far we're thinking. You know. Roll and build it all the way down, obviously.
Right.
Wherever it goes to eliminate the concern, yeah.
It's just out of curiosity, even though it's not part of this phase one, that the. Other building that could make a future proposal, closest to River Road, where would it have, where was the thought of access coming from? Whether coming from River Road?
Um, I think we've got proposed. Or cut in there. Road.
It is proposed on River Road.
Yeah.
At the. We're going to the east end of the property.
That might not. Not show up well on our copies. Yeah. I see that. It's noticed like this. Oh. There it is, right there.
Yeah. That should, yeah, pretty close to.
Nice, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Hard as the French needs to go. If you wanna do something, make it. Figure out how far, what, what distance that is off the road.
So it's one sixty.
Like one sixty.
One forty seven.
Yeah, one sixty from the center line of the road. But.
Hmm.
About a hundred and twenty seven from the right of way.
That's to the south. And probably that building two.
Yeah.
Two. Yeah. Looks to be about. Forty. It looks in forty, I think, feet north of. I'm just. That's good.
So if we go forty foot past the building or two hundred foot in. That's it? Inch? Is that fair?
Site plan, where would that branch not be followed then?
A little concerned too.
There are.
I don't know what the price difference between like an eight foot fence and a ten foot fence would be for that. It's, I like, we don't want to.
They don't, this guy with the.
Oh.
Yeah.
Yeah. Six, six.
Yeah.
Many six.
Yeah.
Soon. And I don't know.
Do you have like? I was. That, yes.
What do you think?
It's a, that's why, so we're gonna, if we make it eight, that does the same kind of.
That's here.
Yeah, it was three feet tall, so I mean, that's.
It doesn't have a. It's in. That's.
Here. That's all, that's this whole.
Yeah. That's a good.
So. Something.
Yeah. This.
Yeah, see, that means everything, because we just.
Right. We're saying. Already, you know, you have three. Time of hours. It's a six foot.
Covering. Like, I got, you know, eight foot, I think that's stock. I think that's a typical stock. Yeah, time for it's not. From our seat.
No, that's wood.
Okay, there. Could we have one group conversation?
Yep, yeah, absolutely.
Okay, bring it back.
That's. I get six setting.
Yeah.
We said this was what, one twenty or thirty?
Want to take it from the center line.
That's.
Yeah, that's footage.
What's it, what's it look like from length down?
About forty, it's a hundred, a hundred and four, a hundred and twenty feet from the center line, I think. Or were you saying a hundred and sixty?
It's a hundred and sixty from the center line, right? We're aligned at the center of River.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
Building two. Yeah, building two. Yeah.
How far in does that fence have to come from the roadway to start?
Straight line. Run on the house.
Yeah.
Where you can see the building. Be about ninety feet. If you drew a straight line from the front of the building. Facing Whitehall to the front of the adjacent house facing River. Would be about ninety feet. From the center line of River to that property line.
Yeah, yes, it was mentioned was, we don't know the costs on those, the difference in price, we could be making use of the Cadillac, something. Manufactured, which obviously brings, you know, is there a way that, we were saying maybe bringing back the next meeting for maybe the difference between six and eight? That's so that we could see what that is for, and I'm sure there's probably a price for ten. I don't want you to do all the extra legwork, but for you to show your cost to us helps us to say, you know, it doesn't seem like that, that's maybe a hardship at that point.
Okay.
Uh. If we were to, is that kind of what we were saying?
Yeah.
The uh, be fair. Excellent, we would need a motion. To take. The fat.
Um, I didn't hear anything about air conditioning units, though that was something that's, you have any?
No, heater, heater units, like a restaurant, roadway. But nobody were mentioning.
Yeah. That. Satisfying.
Access just material.
Right, yeah, it's taking.
Right. All right. Uh. Make motion to table SU twenty four dash seven seven and SPR twenty four dash thirteen.
Good. I guess we need to look at the fence.
No, to look at the cost differences of the fence.
Give a motion. Give a support.
Support.
Hey, yes, Jesse?
Yes.
Ed?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Jack?
Yes.
Devin?
Yes.
All right, he said we can make another month, but I think it'll give you an opportunity to. Provide at least that one question.
Yep.
Enough with us. All right, he had to look at that one.
Yeah, thanks, Tom.
All right, thank you. Next up, we have SU twenty four dash O two. And then SPR twenty four dash fourteen at twenty five sixty six Whitehall Road, YLO Investments. Site, uh, we have someone here for that one? Okay. I think come up and give us. What you look for.
Afternoon, I am Mark Hacker, with Mark W. Hacker, Construction and Architectural Services, representing YLO Investments. In which they want to develop approximately forty point seven five acres of property. Including fifty nine uh. Buildings. Reflexed buildings with four new roads. They, it's a property on the corner of, they got a road in Whitehall. Um, clients has done their investigations, but there's a very high demand right now for rental properties, especially on the north side of this county. And we believe that this is a viable option, that's good for the community. And so that's where we're at. Any questions?
I'll tell you what, right now, um. I don't know if there's any from the public, we'll open up the public hearing if we hear anything at that point, but maybe some things, you can take some notes on if there's something that they would like to address. Uh, at that point, when we do open up the public comments, make the request to us, so that we will go to you. So we just try to keep it so it's nice and tidy, but, there you go. All right, I will open up the public hearing for SU twenty four oh eight and SPR twenty four dash fourteen at six fif- six fifty nine, six forty. Is there anyone that'd like to make a comment?
Yeah, I would like, my name is Barb Mayer, I have a twenty eight five waiting sent, which will be right to the back of this new property. Um, I mean, I was wondering, like, would you say these are rentals?
I'm allowed to answer, correct? Uh, you, you can direct it this way, but she will hear that.
The property, the properties would be either rental, um, or there could be a possibility of someone buying one and, you know. Living on one side and renting the other, but most definitely that could be, their ideas for investment properties to do rentals, correct?
Um, would any of that? Um. Be considered um. Section eight or some kind of government assisted living?
I can't answer that question. I don't know. I mean, that, section eight, I understand correctly goes through people individually.
Correct.
And so they would have that right to always do that, I don't think that we could in any way, shape or form govern that legally.
By discrimination. I remember that this was, um, for purchase, generally before purchase by people that then would, would might rent them out that way. It would be a landlord tenant relationship, and at that point. Oh, I'm not sure, section eight housing has some very. I don't know.
When he first put up there, he said rentals, not. You know, that, so these are two sided, two sided, two home buildings, or forty of those?
Two what?
Or.
Fifty-nine? Yes.
I think that's one thing for now. I guess, when, when were you thinking of considering starting to build these?
Weather dependent, probably in the spring. I'd like to reserve that for the same reason, as last winter. We had seventy degrees or fifty-five degrees in February, it might start sooner.
And how long does it take to build all those?
Approximately three years.
But we have, yeah, so we've been listening to that for three years since. Yeah, nobody wants that.
And then the fence idea.
Wait, once, are we just, are you?
Yes, I think.
Okay. Hold that one, alright, you have someone else who'd like to speak?
I have Jeffis twenty-three sixty Williamson.
Okay.
So then the property that. We have on the bike trail, so this is from River to Agar, that section that's right in there. For the bike trail, I, would a fence be? Something that we could consider too for our property to hide off that? Noise, and this is, could be our exact view and our. Livelihood on a dead end road that we've had, that we've lived here for forty-two years. And have. Bought this property because it is a dead end and, uh. Just in what he's talking about, bringing.
Yeah.
Is just, you know, from one extreme to the next.
Is your property between his and the bike trail?
Butt up.
Butts up to the bike trail.
What does it butt up to going, going west?
Another house.
No, I guess I'm confused.
There's not.
Are, are you completed with yours, man?
Yes.
Okay, alright.
Hi, it's Mike Peter, I live at twenty-three eighty-five Williamson. Our property. Butts right up to this property. We're on the west side of Williamson. And it looks to me like they're gonna build a duplex right in my backyard. Wanna know if there's gonna be some kind of a buffer zone of trees? Or a really tall fence, or some other obstruction, so I don't have to look at all that. Yeah, three years. And listened to it for three years, yeah.
Can I answer?
Yes, go ahead. Lots down through nineteen do butt up to existing residential property, but that is the only ones that butt up to any residential properties. It was specifically designed for those lots to be deeper, to ensure that there would be a buffer zone, and there is an existing tree line there at the property line. So therefore, due to the fact that there was a tree line, there was no plans to install a fence, um, for that run along what you call the south side of the property line. Um, I, of course, that's not that it couldn't happen, but there was, it, from the, walking the property and having it surveyed, it, it's quite, quite a bit of buffer under. Back there, it's over a hundred feet from, yeah. And there is no, I mean, the bike trail is on the west, or excuse me, the east. River Road is to the, or not River Road, Whitehall Road is to the west, and Agar, which is a commercial right across the street, basically is, so. And a majority of those homes, I mean, yeah, there'd probably be ten homes that would be, in my opinion, noisy while they're under construction, but. Obviously, they're stuck, they're, you know, Agar's thirteen hundred, that's almost quarter mile away where they're gonna be starting, so it's quite a bit away, wouldn't. All functional, of course, would have heard during standard construction timeframes, and it wouldn't be off there at night or anything.
Do you have any other questions?
Got it, son. I'm a little concerned with the type of tenants that are gonna be there. As far as deterioration of the neighborhood. And things like that, and things like that.
I think two bedroom, two bath, is that what?
One side is two bedroom, two bath, the other side is three bedroom, two bath. Also, in with the documents is the, uh, bylaws for that, which are, in my opinion, I believe quite a few. They are quite, quite rigid, uh, no businesses can be conducted on the property other than standard in a home, you know, someone who wants to sell land, way type things, we're not, we don't stop that. They're not gonna have standing cars or automobile type construction or repair going on, that's all very strictly covered, including leaving, um. Things outdoors, uh, if they don't take care of their lawn, they don't maintain it, they don't mow it, it, it would be, it's enforced in the bylaws that it will get done for them, and then they will be charged. So, I mean, as much as you can do to keep it. Quality runners.
One more thing, what is the price range on the?
Well, the exact price range hasn't been determined as of yet, but it will be around four hundred thousand dollars a unit. Or, uh, excuse me, a building, a unit, a building, just two units per building. And that's totally from the hip.
Now, I conclude that three minutes, is there anyone else that would like to? Okay, we, have you already spoken?
Yes.
Okay, we, we give everyone an opportunity for the three minutes, um, so if there's anyone that has anything else that has, anyone else that'd like to speak? I will just, you know, was public hearing at six fifty-eight?
Did you have a thing about?
No. Alright, we're just gonna, we're gonna need to do some discussion here, so.
Other four roads going off of Whitehall Road?
Agar.
Off Agar.
Through Agar, yeah.
Yeah, I guess you're on Agar, and then they, there'll be three entrances off of Agar, and then the, the fourth road is the back road that connects off of it. It's like a, it looks like a W. Out to, you know, you can go back to Agar. And the one that's off, getting to get on it, that's southernmost side. Go down there or not?
And.
Yeah, go ahead.
Have you considered, uh, building in landscaping maintenance as part of the ownership, as opposed to everybody being responsible for their own backyard and?
Um, only in the sense that the bylaws do require that if they don't maintain their, they have, in the practice time, they have one year to get all their landscaping and stuff done. And then if they don't maintain it, then of course, it would kick in that it would be maintained.
Yeah, there's no association fee or anything like that.
Okay, there will be an association, yes.
It seems like that's always a, you know, neighborhood issue. Um. I've lived in a townhouse community in South Florida, and I just think, you know. Bob's is meticulous with other people, it's garbage, you know, I mean, there's that sentiment sometimes that is reflective in a multi-family development. But, um, I think you got it covered in the bylaws, I did read the bylaws, there's three.
No additional concrete pads are allowed to be poured on the property.
Yeah.
Every, um, unit has to have a professional garbage disposal, one per unit, not one per building. Um. It's pretty.
Yeah.
Pretty strict bylaws.
That's a good thing.
Usually.
Any other questions? Who we'd like to ask before we elaborate here?
I'll ask, I'll ask this one again, uh, are school buses coming in the property, or are they gonna wait on Agar?
Again.
I'll bet you they'll wait.
I, I don't know that answer from. I mean, I'm, I don't know what this is.
Yeah.
I, I would be surprised if they'll go down in private road.
Right, okay.
But I don't know that answer.
Someone will ask.
So, Mark, take it into consideration Mike's proximity to the corner back there, and him being the, the end lot. Would there be willingness to? Work with him on a whole privacy fence, is, is that would make them feel more comfortable?
I'm gonna say yes, the idea is, they're trying to keep these as affordable as possible. They don't, they're not affordable, they won't sell, they won't sell, then there's a whole other set of problems that come in. Not talking fencing, the entire property, which is over a mile and a half of fencing, if you go all the way around. So, I mean, on an individual basis, if he would be willing, I am certain that I have enough sway with the developer that they would be willing to do that.
What is that back corner lap, a hundred foot wide or?
All the lots on the back are a hundred feet wide, in fact, they, they, we, if you'll see in your notes, we deliberately. Skinning them up to make them longer, specifically because that was the side that has a residential development budding up to it, the other sides do not. So we did that on, basically on purpose. To try to make it more, more backyard.
Why, I'm not, it's typical, um, the typical layout is at a hundred and three? Is it a hundred and three instead of a hundred?
It, it. No, I think, I think it is a hundred and three, I apologize.
Okay.
Yeah, it's a hundred and three, yeah. I can't pretend to see the roundoff when I'm just talking about it, but that's a hundred and three. Wide instead of a hundred, hundred is the minimal.
Any other questions?
The exception is just, that's due to slight. So special use itself is for private roads. But the case, like condo does not need a public hearing? That could be approved. Administratively, not administratively, but it could be approved as an administrative function of the planning commission, and then recommended to the boards. Is there private roads that it needs up?
Okay, I was a little, that's, I was wanting to go, because of this only, it's, yeah, that's already. Part two.
I guess, we noticed here too, they just, they're summary, there's a press piece, get that to writing it. I do not, um. I don't have an official review yet. Okay. But yeah, I did work with the recommendations of the fire chief. For fire hydrants and access. Like, you already kind of expressed how you prefer to. Yeah, like a preliminary, this is what? What we need just on. Preliminary review. Yeah. On, on kind of the norms of what. Yeah. Okay. Make sure that's covered.
Yeah. Any other discussion?
We welcome it now, otherwise we are at a point where. There was single. Point, you'll see the dash around the actual units, that tells you where the setback line is versus where the property line is. And those back ten lots, and you'll notice that there's, it's a good thirty, forty, fifty feet past the setback line. Nice big backwards.
Part of the bunny path case of the front. It's hot outside.
The lots on that side are, um, they're roughly, they're about a hundred, uh, two hundred. Sorry, I'd have to look the drawings in front of you. Not the only project I have in the world. But it is, uh, the property line actually butts up to the property line easement line, and I believe the bike path, it's got like a thirty or forty foot easement, so it's, uh, relatively far. It's not like it's, people's backyards are gonna be in the bike path.
Like that would be a positive. For the property, that is real asset.
Attention and why that property, I believe, was focused found. Check the names of the road, refer to it.
I'll make an observation, the, uh, this region of Michigan or Muskegon County, they're not real, uh. Experience with these types of developments, you don't see a lot of them, and I think for that reason, we've done a good job, maybe pay strict attention to those bylaws. Cause everybody's got, you know, what about this, what about that? But, um, I, I'm sure you're aware of that, it's, it's unique to the area, I think, in some respects.
Yep.
We might be accommodating as much as real as.
Right. Alright, do I have anyone? Any questions, or anything we need to direct Stephen for certification, or anyone would like to?
Yeah. It's not full, is it? Wait.
Yeah, well. I can't find them.
Yeah.
There are two motions that may, may be made, one is for the special use, and the other is for the. Recommendation for the. We were to approve the compel.
That's the one at the bottom, that's just like, oh.
Yeah.
It used to be a one.
Right, okay.
We need to do both of them, that's the one, just above here, and then the one.
And all of the single motion still applies. That would be for if, uh, preferable as the like.
We, we need to include the.
You would need to add, add that in. After first line to make a motion. Before Frederick Street says proposed. Or you could also add that in to the, um, the site condominium, that might be a good.
Okay.
A better place for it.
Just to approve the site.
Recommend approval of the site condominium with the condition that. Fence is placed in a certain area.
Okay.
I don't know if a certain area was in, I think it's like that. It's the one in the corner down there. I designed it the one that's. But there'd be on a certain property line. Certain area of that lot.
The top, the motion would be still in place as written, and then the one below it, if you have to have the front fence.
Yeah, that would be where you could add the fence.
Okay. So we now we got a square way to spend.
You could do, you could move all of the. You do the approval of the private road first and then talk about the fence before the next motion, or you could talk about the fence now and then do both motions, or not do that. It might be a good idea to do one at a time and then discuss it before making the next motion.
So any other questions on roads? Oh, definitely.
Make the motion to approve special land use SU twenty four oh eight and SPR twenty four dash fourteen for establishment of the fourth private streets. The entire thing, I thought we were doing it separate.
The.
Oh, okay. A further move that the requirements of section four twenty four, D twenty one of the zoning ordinance would modify pursuant to section sixteen point of the zoning ordinance to waive the requirements for inspection to be performed by township engineers. A further move that the requirements of section four twenty four G two F four of the zoning ordinance be modified pursuant to section sixteen dot four. Zoning ordinance to require that the applicant submit as-built drawings. Certifying that the private road was built to meet required standards, which have been prepared, signed and sealed by a professional engineer. Who's been licensed by the state of Michigan in lieu of certification by the township engineer. I further then move that the requirements of section seven point five B two of the zoning ordinance be modified pursuant to section sixteen four of the zoning ordinance to allow for a minimum lot width of a hundred and three point one feet. Between nine through nineteen as proposed by the applicant. I will be pausing to discuss. Or do I continue on with?
No.
Yeah, this is not paused, discussed and voted.
Okay, so the fence in question was only in the southeast corner of the entire town, the southern corner.
Yep. I showed all the details of like where, how far.
You know, you discuss this, this motion, vote on this motion and then.
Okay.
And then discuss second, their next motion.
Alright, any discussion?
Yeah.
Alright.
So we supported that motion that he read?
Yeah.
I'll support.
Alright, then let's take our, we'll take a vote on that. Better discussion? Dave, yes? Jesse?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Kevin? Alright. Now we will move on to the condominium, which we are gonna try to locate where that fence needs to be.
Yes. I'm not opposed to this fence. But I'm afraid of getting in the habit of throwing guys and fences at everything. You know what I mean? Not opposed to it at all. Right. But because it's just. I wanna make sure it's reasonable and that it is helpful. Um, and not just placing a burden on somebody trying to do something. So. Yeah, I guess I wanna see like the distances involved and if it's even really required.
I.
Prevent any kind of disruption or anything.
Looking at the aerial. It looks like the corner of all of the developments is gonna come into your backyard.
Exactly.
Yes.
But nothing, we have a pool.
Yeah.
So all those people should not care and look right in our backyard and take away everything that we've had for the last forty years. For which reason, like them.
I mean, we appreciate, we're, we're trying to, we're trying to make the stipulation as to.
I don't really want a fence that they don't want any of it.
We probably already have a fence, right?
A chain fence, yes.
Okay.
What about evergreens?
It's hard to tell if it is even gonna add value. I mean, looking at this, there's trees for a buffer. How do we know they're gonna get eliminated? Maybe they won't even touch them. But.
Are there any plans for any tree removal at that portion?
The tree removal will, if there is any, it would stop at the, at the property line. But there, I will make the stipulation right now, so long as it doesn't interfere with the retention area that is on. Cause I have to have that retention area with five thirty-three drain and the drain conditioner. So long as it's not in that, we will leave those trees there. In fact, we don't wanna take them out. We don't wanna do any more tree removal than we have. But I kinda have that five thirty-three drain and that doesn't work with a tree since it would undermine the roots and then the tree would just fall out. So, Mark, it's that part, you know, drain commissioner rule that I have, I have to follow. I don't know if it's out of line, but I mean, I'll meet with them out there and I want, I want them to be happy. We will, we have. I know it's not formal, if they're willing to trust us, but I mean, developments happen if we get. That's the idea.
It's a hard thing for us to do from this position.
I understand.
Which.
I just don't wanna get in a situation where then the next one wants it, then the next one, then that requires taking down trees that we weren't planning on taking down because the fence now interferes with the trees of the property line. And, and it just snowballs.
That brings to, to what John brought forward is.
Snowballs.
We're gonna make stipulations proportions and it could be for all or it could be for none. And then how are we creating, you know, consistency or even the desired effect is met. It's just.
Yeah, I guess I'm lacking some understanding of like the distances here. From the home to where, I mean, I, I'm looking at satellite footage right now. And is there a blueprint that shows that, like where the bike pass is on the east side? How far from the bike path is the eastern edge of this property or where, where is?
Eastern edge of the property and the western edge of the bike path are the same line.
Oh, okay.
But the bike path is much wider than the bike path itself. It's the, it extends past the actual path. Probably ten, twelve feet. On each side.
Right away from the trailer.
Right away, correct.
Yeah.
Okay.
So we have conversation. Is that how you add it?
I guess one thing, so that it's a public is clear. To keep in mind anyways is, is that the properties already zoned R two. And we wouldn't even be having a public hearing with the exception of the private roads they wanted to put in. But I mean, without the private roads.
That just goes.
Yeah, they just, you can just build whatever you wanna build in that parcel. You can build this whole thing in that parcel without the private roads. I mean, it's my reason it's here is the private roads and they're already exceeding setbacks, which is good for residents. So that's just, that's one thing that kind of turns me a little bit from any kind of offense is because they're already exceeding the setback. And they're, we might even have a public hearing with the exception of just the roads. I mean, they're bringing the driveway and off Whitehall Road and putting like parcels down the south side and it wouldn't even be here. Right.
True.
So do we?
It looks like to me, I mean, most trees will have to go along that south property line in order to construct the drains and drain commissioners clearing. There again, I mean, in my opinion, they know. Doing the work they do. I mean, if, if, if a guy doesn't have to clear right to the property line, he's not going to. If he can stay ten feet off, he's gonna stay ten feet off. That's one other thing for residents to understand, I guess, is in my opinion, you know, being a slant work. You know, if they can leave ten foot wide of trees on their property, they're not gonna take them out because every tree they gotta take out is more work. If they put a fence up, they basically need to clear right to that property line. So it's kind of a catch twenty-two that might lose ten or fifteen foot of buffer because you want a fence. So maybe better off just leaving the buffer.
If there's trees there, I don't, you know.
That, that's all I guess. Well, if you go out there and everybody is, you know, that.
This is where it comes into.
Yeah, because they gotta build these condos here.
So they have lower.
Yeah, so there'll be some retention patterns. And so like creating limit to those is probably right there. So.
There was the red line.
So I can see him, you know, not having to, not having to move the dirt pass this way.
Yeah.
Keep feet off that line.
Yeah.
But then if you wanna put a fence here, you're gonna go right to the line. So.
Yep.
I know it gets thin on that side of there on the east. There's a piece of that.
We're at a point, we, uh, is this something we need to consider or, I mean, really, we're not required to, but I think it sounds like we're trying to be, he's doing what he needs to bring forward, not take them out if required, unless they're required. And a fence definitely doesn't.
Can't really ask much more of that.
Yeah. Did your words fit that? Send it to the board.
Everybody good with that?
I'm good. What's that?
Just gonna have to do a total report.
I think so. It's, it's such a catch, like they say.
Yeah.
I mean, at, at most, I can see useful would be a hundred foot of fence each way from that very corner of the property. But again, that that last part, I mean, it's ending twenty, thirty feet from the east edge. Eighty feet from the south edge. To me, you require the hundred foot fence, you're not gaining much. Because every tree's gonna come out right to that. That's what I guess.
Do I have to be the one to finish them all?
Yep.
I do? Please, are you good?
I'm good.
I make a motion to recommend that township board approve the proposed site condominium.
Do you have the support? Dave? Yes, Jesse?
Yes.
Todd?
Yes.
Lee?
Yeah.
Todd?
Yes.
And Kevin?
Yes.
Goes forward. Alright, we are now moving into communications and township board meeting note. On the planning and zoning report for September and the administrative site plan review for thirty-eight eighty Old Road. Uh, no unfinished business. And that brings us to. Do we need a break for facilities or anything? Yeah. Alright, we will go ahead and move on to new business SPR twenty-four dash fifteen at twenty-six ninety-five high. Amendments to the POV condominium, that's site plan for sweet space. I'm guessing that would be what you are here.
Get answered out there. We're trying, we had a little, we had a little roadblock there, uh, that something came up and that's why we're, we're with the, with the ten foot between the buildings. And after all the months that we spent, we got two walls up and then all of a sudden it was, um, the building inspector sent it off. We already had the permits, the building inspector sent it off to a reviewer, reviewer was on vacation. He came back in week three and said, oh, you got firewall all this? Yeah. I mean, and it got pretty stupid. So firewalls were insane money to put the firewalls in to do what they wanted to do. So the only option was to lose a couple of buildings. It's placed the buildings to twenty feet. So we were past this deployment. Which if I'd have known that at the beginning, I probably wouldn't have done it, but we had put it to the ground and you. So. Yeah. But that's where we're at, just a, um. Yeah.
Where'd that oversight come from?
Yeah, who made that call?
It, it was the, if we, cause we, we had so many meetings all the way through, you know, to make sure that, that I could get previous, we had ten feet. I just, it never went to the building inspector and to, uh, I don't think it ever went one step past, you know, to get to that plan review guy. And once they got there, it was, it was like the requirements when they sent the plan review back. That was three weeks past pulling the permits. That had all, had this stuff on there. And it was like, when we, when we figured out the firewall cost to do the fee that, you know, the burn rate that they wanted and everything else, it was just not economical to do it. So it was either trying to do it that way. I remember, and we had a couple of options, whereas one room was to shrink those driveways to seventy feet to get that hundred feet or lose the buildings. And it was like, I think we talked about it in the seat for the people that, you know, eighty feet, you don't want a, a narrow driveway in there.
Yeah.
Because, and, and we had already that, um, the infrastructure for those first four buildings. So it was like to straight that in and, and redo all of that. Our only option was to stretch the, add ten feet between the buildings, get buildings out further and then, uh, oh. I mean, and we're, and when I talked to Steve about it, you know, and he said this, we could come, if I wanted to do, there's something else I wanna do because we lost some more buildings. Um, because of the setback off of, you know, we had the first set of prints done and, and approved. Behind the houses, um, he had found a setback. There's this twelve foot setback there. That should be thirty, I guess, or whatever. So we ended up to get it just so we could get the approval to keep going. To get these buildings, you know, trying to get the next set off right away and the next set, um, passes, we can get them done. Then have to come back. But the next one, I think Steve said it too, that it was a public meeting. He had to send out for a public meeting and I couldn't wait that long. You know, to go through that process again. Um, so this one was a just to make those simple amendments that he said you guys could make and then come back and do the gain those doors back because we almost lost three buildings now. But. gain those doors back, because we almost lost three buildings now, but. But they're going.
Yeah.
We're the second one that's framed in, the first one, though, we didn't, and steel's going on that next, and everybody's lined right up to do it.
Yeah, just cause of proximity, is what they're saying. The, the, aren't the one, the ones, the ones in Norton Shore do that then?
They did, they did, and they did on.
They're closer, yeah.
Yep, yep, and, and so, on the gable ends, um, we were gonna have, and I just agreed to do that, so, okay, if I have to, if I have to firewall the gable ends, um, we would do it to get the burn rate. But Norton Shore is, I think, Steve knows, this is, their zoning, that was their zoning guy did it, they they go ten foot straight one of the buildings, two inches, put ten foot two between those walls. And it's okay. So, 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 that's what we ended up doing, it was taking two, you know, quarter inch on Iron Bay. And then get that next building to write the ten foot two. And then we didn't have to firewall the gable ends of that. So.
Geez.
So, so, so when I come back, what it really like, it was two inches, you know, a building, buildings, sixty by one fifty buildings. But there's no room on the, on those outside setbacks, but it was too long of a meeting to go through. We have to go through planning that board, then, you know, and he has to notify everybody, and it was another trouble once over. But we, get this one set up, was to, so we got at least twenty-two or twenty buildings, so we could keep going. Don't have to go to a public meeting, and a public board meeting. Again, when they were, when they had, a contractor was there, two walls. And he said, he blew my phone up, going, what is going on here? You know about all this? And I said, no. So. I sent all those guys home, so I gotta go with lunch, and we have meetings, we tried to figure out some things, you know, pretty quick, and the only thing that made it ten foot on the, on the three hundred feet side, and or twenty feet. Who's in order, we.
I'm gonna read this one.
Are you ready for motion?
I make a motion to approve special land use S U twenty-four dash oh seven.
Oh, okay. Thank you, David. We have a lot of paper. You have no idea.
I'll tell you.
I make a motion to make a motion to approve S P R twenty-four dash one five to make minor changes, the previously approved planned unit development, minor changes to the approved condominium approval, and major changes to the approved site plan review, S P R twenty-four dash one one, and the condition that the westernmost units be removed from building W, building X, and building Y, and the units of those buildings may be renumbered as needed.
And I have a motion and a support. Hey, yes, Jesse? Ken?
Yes.
Lee?
Yeah.
Ken?
Yes.
And Kevin?
Yeah.
Thank you, guys. I'll see you again, though, I gotta, we gotta, but, we gotta try to get those doors back. I need a weekend, you know, because I had it all figured out with the infrastructure, you know, every door figured. I appreciate, I appreciate you guys' best, thank you. Alright, guys, see ya, thank you.
Alright, and that brings us up to the, uh, if we wanted to read another motion, uh, that's another one, all those, do you have a support?
Plus support.
Alright, all those, please say hi.
Hi.
Go ahead, that's number thirty-five.